This is episode 287 of the Rio Grande Foundation's Tipping Point New Mexico. I'm Paul Gessing.
And I'm Wally Drangmeister.
I'm president of the Rio Grande Foundation, New Mexico's free market think tank. You can find out more about the foundation at rio grandefoundation.org. Wally, the latest COVID update is worth discussing before we get started with the end of the 2020, 2021 legislative session and more.
Regular session.
Yes, the regular session. We will be having a special session coming up very soon, actually tomorrow. But on the COVID front, according to New Mexico's Department of Health, you have no New Mexico counties remaining in the dreaded red area of the rubric. We still have Burnley County, unfortunately, in yellow, although numbers continue to drop across the state, an increasing number of green counties. And for, I think, the first time, the bulk of counties, the biggest single category is the turquoise area of the rubric. So San Juan County, Santa Fe, Lee County, McKinley County, Los Alamos County, Socorro, a lot of relatively sizable counties have made it into the highest current potential category, which is turquoise. No word yet on the platinum or super platinum or gold or whatever other category we may come up with here.
The captain's club elite. Oh, wait, that's flying close. Same idea.
Yeah. And just to kind of conclude on this particular part of the update, Harding County, which was one of the early green, then turquoise, had one case come out of their county, and that's like, you know, 450 people or so, which would have set them all the way back to the red. I don't know how many restaurants are in Harding County, but there was an adjustment made to, to the code. There's talk of possibly for some big counties like Burnley County, Doñana County, Sandoval, which are struggling to get out of the yellow for a variety of reasons, possibly some changes to that. But we're just following the science here and, you know, it is good news ultimately moving in the right direction.
Yes, absolutely. Good news. And one of the change, some of the changes being contemplated is the color is the present percent of positive tests. And so as the virus increasingly goes away, only people who are pretty sure they have it will test positive. So that seems like that might need a little bit of fine tuning because I've already heard of a couple of counties that basically get people who know they don't have COVID to go get tested so that they can prove that they don't have COVID. That seems like maybe a waste of resources. Maybe we should take that effort, put that into vaccination or something else. But yeah, overall, good news. But, you know, in this world of science and data, it's ever changing and maybe some adjustments will be made, but good news for New Mexico. Boy, we need it because the states surrounding us have had our people coming for tourism. And I'm already hearing people starting to say, man, we, we had a, we had a conference planned in Santa Fe last summer that got canceled, but we're considering doing it again. But boy, we don't want to have an August conference planned for Santa Fe and then have that go back to a color that wouldn't allow it. So.
Yes, sir. And we will see how this evolves. Of course, numerators and denominators very key in the fraction. If you didn't understand your fractions before, fractions and percentages, very important stuff. And yeah, the idea of having more people tested who you know, don't have the virus. It's been something that we've seen around the state, around the nation, I think, and in other places that do similar, you know, red, yellow, green, or whatever.
And when a lot of people have it, that does, that's not necessary. It's, you know what I mean? When there were a lot of people that didn't know if they had it, you know, they weren't feeling good and, you know, I'm not dissing the testing, but maybe that one, maybe you ought to look at just a reasonable number of positive cases or something like that and get away from, get away from that higher math of, of fractions.
Yeah. And, and good news, Cliffs has announced that they will be reopening on May 8th. Certainly one of the businesses that has been challenged by particularly COVID-19 and the governor's restrictions, not being able to open at all during the 2020 season. There was definitely concern with ownership and just a lot of people wondering if they're going to be, they were going to be allowed to open this year on time. But May 8th is maybe it's not the exact time they would normally open, but certainly it's close to it. Interestingly enough, Hinkle Family Fund Center, kind of another local family oriented event center, as the parent of three small children who are definitely chomping at the bit to go to Hinkle Family Fund Center, you know, they probably three weeks ago at this point that they were allowed to open, they have not announced a date or said exactly when they will open. They are hiring, so if you want to go work there, I think, and without postulating too much, it has got to be a challenge to attract people to the workforce with the very generous federal benefits flowing out on unemployment. That just strikes me as something that is going to be tough for a lot of these relatively lower wage enterprises to achieve is getting the people that they want to hire that maybe worked there in the past rehired. So best of luck to both Cliffs and Hinkle Family Fund Center. We want those places to be open, but federal policies especially are pushing people to remain on the sidelines or at least giving them the option because of the generous benefits that are being handed out.
Yeah, there's a, I'm seeing tens of help wanted signs in restaurants. Another one that suffered greatly under COVID and a lot of people were laid off. And then a couple of different things is yes, the, the unemployment and, you know, it's like, maybe you wouldn't make as much as before, but maybe I can stay home and, you know, imbibe in my soon to be legalized marijuana and, you know, take a little bit of a psychic vacation. But the other thing is that in certain categories, there's people in some industries, particularly in hospitality and others that decided it's like, hey, things are going pretty good in Phoenix and Scottsdale and Lubbock and Dallas. There are quite a few people who have left the workforce now, whether they'll be permanent and whether they come back, we'll have to see. But yeah, definitely some challenges coming out of this from the business point of view.
Yes, and more somewhat good news, although not pertaining to New Mexico, and that is neighboring states, you know, recently Texas reopened fully, dropping the mask mandate and essentially allowing people to go back to life as reasonably close to normal as possible. Arizona and Utah have done much the same thing, possibly some local variation there, but two neighboring states to New Mexico. Arizona is the only state around the region that neighbors New Mexico that has had greater challenges with the virus than New Mexico has. And Utah has been among the most immune, if you will, to the virus of any state, but both of them have lifted their restrictions. Texas, of course, did so. Now it's been a few weeks and I wanted to relay some data on this. This is from Google. I didn't feel like going into the World O Meters. We've used that typically in the past, but this is what shows up if you look it up on Google. Texas, their restrictions were eliminated on March the 10th. On that day, they had 5,350 new cases with a rolling day seven, rolling seven day average of 4,909 in the state of Texas. By March 28th, so more than two weeks, they had 3,293 new cases and a rolling seven day average of 4,005. So some pretty nice drops there despite, you know, all the sky is falling chicken littles, Dr. Fauci and all saying that Texas is going to be in trouble. Well, you're over two weeks and Texas is doing just fine. New Mexico on March 10th, just by comparison, show you how small New Mexico is compared to Texas, 249 new cases and a rolling day average of 227. March 28th, 161 new cases, a rolling day, a rolling seven day average of 188. So significant improvement in both places. One, New Mexico, which is and remains heavily locked down relative to the country, relative to certainly our neighbors, Texas, which has really reopened completely and had, you know, two weeks to see a possible spike in cases if that was going to be a game changer. And so far it is certainly not.
Yes, as we look in the rearview mirror, we're starting to see more economic analysis about what really has worked and what has not. And right now, the stringent lockdowns as a policy does not look to be as highly correlated as maybe we've been led to believe by almost everybody who talks about the issue. And then, you know, there was, was a time and I think continues to this day, whereas if you hold a contrary view, the social media outlets don't like that, that out there, even if you have a reasoned analysis. So yeah, a lot of interesting things. And then the other issue relative to places like Arizona and New Mexico, relative to Utah and even Texas, is that when you have older populations, not necessarily on the cases, but you know, there's no question that being older is not a positive indicator for how well you are going to weather the COVID-19 and places like Utah have one of the, you know, the, if not the youngest, one of the youngest populations in the United States do a lot better. One, young people, when they get it, aren't as sick and it seems like their immune systems keep them from catching it quite as much as others. So.
Yeah. And it is true, obviously, the impact varies dramatically state to state in terms of what outcomes you're ultimately going to have with the virus. New Mexico remains, and now I am using World O Meters data, 14th from the top in terms of worst outcomes in terms of deaths per million. The state of Arizona is the sixth worst. You know, there's, everybody else is, you know, doing better than New Mexico as far as beyond that 14th number. Texas is at 24th in the entire country, Oklahoma at 35th, Colorado at 43rd. They were one of the states that was hit pretty hard early on, but you expect Colorado to do pretty well. They have a relatively healthy, relatively young population, Utah at 46th. So there's no doubt that pre-existing conditions and health outcomes and age all are factors. But of course, New Mexico is doing worse than Florida. And if anybody has a old population, certainly full of elderly people.
And an open economy.
And an open economy, yes. Florida is certainly among them. So it's very hard to really pin this thing down in terms of policies, population dynamics, et cetera, et cetera. But we'll move on. As you mentioned at the outset, we are going to have a special session here. The first thing we worry about at the Rio Grande Foundation, anytime we hear those words, especially given the formulation of the legislature is how many anti-freedom measures are going to be put on the agenda by the governor. And in this case, we're actually in pretty good shape. The other measure besides marijuana legalization, which we're comfortable with, I think it's going to be interesting to see if they can really do marijuana legalization in a bipartisan, in, well, a bipartisan fashion or even get it done on a partisan fashion with all of the disagreement that we've already seen over a 60 day session. So that's just a, an interesting dynamic by itself. The other issue is relating to LIDA, Local Economic Development Act. It's a corporate welfare program that we're not big fans of. It's going to make some changes that the governor thinks are helpful to it. You know, we're not super excited about anything relating to LIDA. And so adding more money into it is not our priority, but those are the only two issues. And from that perspective, with everything that could have been put on the agenda, whether it's high interest loans or the clean fuel standard, Senator Stewart's, which we understood that the governor was really pushing for, again, like the session, it could have been a lot worse.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I was, I was talking with some people that work in energy at lunch about that clean fuel standard and, you know, it's one of those, the energy industry isn't necessarily against it because of, you know, it's just a cost that they would add on. And there's not a real constituency for keeping things like that out, except when it comes to, you know, people who are working people, you know what I mean? Let's keep the price, you know, the price of energy low and affordable. It does good things for people who don't make a lot of money. There's a lot of those in New Mexico. So yes, I'm glad to see that that one will have to wait for the 30 day session. I have a sneaking suspicion that will be on the call this, the January upcoming. But yeah, we dodged a bullet from now and then we'll have to see. You know, what did they ask Benjamin Franklin? What kind of government do we have, Ben? You know, what kind of marijuana law do we have, Governor? Is it going to be very bureaucratic to the point that the black market will still have a big stronghold or will be more conducive to competition, have more players, lower prices or something different? You know, I think you are right. There's a lot of building kind of work and consensus, but yeah, this one may be tough to get across the finish line, but we, we will see here in a couple of days what happens.
Yeah. And relating to that special session, as we discussed last week, we're not exactly excited by what I consider to be ultimately an abuse of the special session. This is not a situation where the legislature failed to come to an agreement on a budget. They could easily wait until the next legislative session, get their ducks in a row.
And Paul, you know, even if you were to just do a blunt, a poll of a thousand New Mexicans picked at random, how many of them, you say, what are the top two or three issues facing the state of New Mexico would have said marijuana legalization? You know, it's like the people who want it. I think there's hundreds of thousands of them that are in the medical program. And so I, yeah, I'm with you. It's like this would seem like a strange emphasis for a special session.
Yeah. And worse than that, I think, you know, from a Christian slash Catholic perspective, not to get too far into religion here, but this is Tuesday of Holy Week. You know, Easter is on Sunday and we don't know how far this special, the special session is going to go, but I think it definitely has, you know, there, there's concerns, reasonable concerns to be raised about the fact that we're doing this at this particular time, not only from the religious perspective, but also from the perspective of the governor is still in the signing period. She has bills on her desk that she can sign and she can use the leverage of that signing period, perhaps, oh, you're not going to vote for marijuana legalization or the one I want.
I'm going to veto your capital.
Your capital outlay money. Yeah. So definitely, I, I, I think if you were going to really rewrite an airtight legislative or constitution for the state of New Mexico, you might add in a line about the governor not being able to call a special session unless, until after the previous session's signing period is done. Of course, you know, we're going to do another Zoom session, which nobody thinks is optimal. And yet, if we waited, again, the governor has plenty of time, even if they had adopted one of the bills, I believe HB 12, which is the marquee marijuana legalization bill in the last session, it wouldn't have taken effect until January of 2022. So we have time here, even in the best of circumstances. So have this thing in June, July, or whatever, so you can have folks hopefully in person and do more of the traditional legislative session. So a lot of real issues, I think, with the way this is all being done, both, you know, just the purely religious aspect and respecting people's personal time. Of course, they've just been sequestered up there in Santa Fe or behind their laptops for the Zoom session and a variety of issues, just with this being lacking in an emergency context. Now, one of the legislators that convened in, in January on the Republican side is hoping not to go back to, not the special session, but next January. He is, of course, Mr. Mark Moors, Senator Moors. He is one of the few remaining.
Yeah. I won't say the last man or woman standing, but you know, he's a rare commodity, a Republican in Burnley County, Greater Albuquerque area.
Yeah.
Who holds elective office in Santa Fe.
Yeah. And he is the only state senator with a district in, predominantly in Albuquerque.
Yep.
He is one of few, like you said, representatives or senators, members of the legislature that has a district in Albuquerque. And more impressive, if you will, than that is the fact that Moors is actually one of the more conservative, at least on fiscal issues that the Rio Grande Foundation looks at, fiscally, fiscally conservative members of the New Mexico Senate. And we're looking through the final revisions to the Freedom Index, which we publish every year where we rate the bills and give each member of the legislator, legislature a overall vote. This year, as it currently stands, Moors is second to only Senator Cliff Pirtle out of Roswell. Of course, we know Roswell, Southeast New Mexico is a more conservative part of our state, but he's the only senator to have a better score than Mark Moors. And Moors has been consistently among the most conservative state senators when we run these numbers year after year. So I think, you know, he's somebody that obviously can win tough elections. He is a long time name in New Mexico politics from an elected perspective. He doesn't have maybe the, the state, the name that everybody recognizes, like Elisa Martinez just ran for US Senate in a primary. And so she's billed a certain amount of name ID. She was one of the candidates that ran, but you know, this was the state central committee members here from CD1, Burnley County, in this general area of the state. And they got to go with somebody. There's no perfect candidate on the Republican side of things at this point. Senator Mark Moors is certainly one of the, the choices, and I think he was a, a solid choice.
Yeah. And for a little political analysis, you know, he's still probably going to face an uphill battle, given the electorate of that district. But I will say, you know, kudos to the Republicans for getting their candidate out there first. And I think that there's going to be some value to that because right now what you're reading in the paper is Mark Moors is the candidate for Congressional District One on the Republican side. And here are all the laundry list of people that might get it on the Democratic side. I think that, you know, no matter what happens, I think that is bound to give him a boost, whether it'll be enough to get him over the top and become a representative of New Mexico. We'll have to see, but yeah, it's going to be very interesting to see what happens. Who, who shows up to that race? And, you know, it's one of those, every time there's a race, it's always seeming like a national referendum. So, you know, that's how the national news portrays it anyway. And it'll be interesting to see what people are thinking here in Greater Albuquerque and Northern New Mexico about who would be a good representative.
Yeah. And you're right, it is a tough district for Republicans. It's been in years past, a Republican seat, but that is definitely passed. We've had Martin Heinrich in that seat as a Democrat since Heather Wilson, the last Republican, you know, who really held that seat. So Heinrich, then Governor Lujan Grisham, when she was in the House of Representatives, now Deb Holland. So it's definitely a area that has moved to the left, which having somebody who's won elected office as a Republican in the city of Albuquerque, that, that's certainly, I think, one of the reasons they went the way they did. So we'll, we'll see and who the Democrats choose as well. It's going to be an interesting race and, you know, we're talking rapid fire. We're here at the end of March, so we're looking at April and then May and boom, June the first is when this race will happen. I don't know about early voting or mail-in voting, all that stuff.
Or how many times you can vote. Hopefully it's presumably at least nominally one.
Yes. Further continuing with the legislative session, we have a number of issues. You know, we talked about the good, good bills that passed. We talked about the bad bills that passed. We talked about the ideas, one way or the other, that didn't actually get through the process. And I'd promised or mentioned at least that we would talk about the, what I call the dogs that didn't bark, you know? You know what the Overton window of political possibility is, Wally?
Yeah, vaguely familiar.
So it's actually developed by a guy from a sister think tank of ours, the Mackinac Center based in Michigan. And his name was Joe Overton. He came up with this basic idea that political issues are framed in a window and there are possibilities within that window. Some of them are easier to achieve, some of them are more or less already achieved. And, you know, it goes from wherever you are approaching the issue. For example, our vein is individual freedom. So you have in the education field, education savings accounts, which may be really at the very top of the Overton window across the country. West Virginia just adopted them. And then you have, at the bottom, you have no school choice allowed, period, no homeschooling, no nothing. And then everything else is between those two points of reference. Well, these are issues in New Mexico as the Overton window is currently constructed that didn't get really even discussed. And, you know, these are issues that are near and dear to the Rio Grande Foundation, but it's worth just making sure that we acknowledge just how far to the left New Mexico's legislature really is at this point, based on some of these kind of mainstream issues that didn't even get a hearing. Right to work is right there. You did not have any discussion, not even a bill introduced on allowing people to opt out of paying dues or joining unions. Reduce or eliminate the income tax, personal income tax. This is something that I firmly believe that if New Mexico actually managed its oil and gas money and reduced the size of government marginally, just made it better operated, more accountable, that we could easily be like Alaska or another state with no income tax, Texas. Reform the GRT, that one's been talked about for years. There was no broad-based reform effort on the GRT. Of course, that's gross receipts tax, occupational licensing reform, nothing broad-based was done to address that. That issue was, you know, something that Susanna Martinez in her waning days did bring forth, and it's a big issue on both the right and the left. In fact, the left, the Democrats did, I believe they passed a bill that you won't be judged differently from the perspective of occupational licensing, whether you are a citizen or not of the United States or illegal immigrant or whatever. So there, it's on their radar screen. Eliminating film subsidies. I know that's a, that's a laugher these days in Santa Fe, but heaven forbid we, you know, actually call progressives out on issues where the left is using our tax dollars to fund very wealthy corporations and individuals. Consider new approaches to the rail runner and spaceport. We've talked about those, pretty ad nauseam here. Ambitious school choice. Now, bills did get introduced in this vein, but they didn't move. They got killed in their first committee while West Virginia, a state that has many similarities to New Mexico, is passing education savings accounts, higher education reform. You have a bloated dysfunctional system in the state of New Mexico, and that's before we get to UNM's athletics department. You know, that needs to be addressed and outright repeal of the Energy Transition Act or just instituting rate caps to make sure that utilities don't increase rates rapidly as they institute more renewable sources of electricity. There was legislation that was introduced and also died very quickly among some, I would call them disaffected progressives who suddenly realized apparently that PNM's going to cash in on the Energy Transition Act and they don't like that very much. So anyway, Wally, those are some of the dogs that did not bark in this legislative session.
Yeah. And I have a feeling that that list that you went over is maybe the biggest casualty of the Zoom, meaning that without being able to be there in person. meaning that without being able to be there in person, there wasn't even, you know, I think the Republicans who might, and not, those are not, as you said, all Republican issues, but they're like, why bother? You know, why bother doing a right to work bill that I know it's going to spend time and get it drafted? I know it's going to get killed in its first committee. Whereas if you actually had a committee hearing and people there, maybe there'd be some more interest in that. But yeah, very, very interesting list.
Yeah. And I would be remiss if I didn't say, these are all things that the Rio Grande Foundation would very much like to see. But unfortunately, given the New Mexico legislature and its dominance by what I would call pretty far-left forces, I don't expect that many of these will be given a fair hearing in the not-too-distant future.
Or even an unfair hearing, unfair hearing at the rate it's going, right?
Right. Well, we, we need to dramatically change the way the state operates or we're going to, you know, kind of be in this cycle of oil and gas boom and bust, reliance on the federal government. And, you know, right now, we're in a bit of a boom cycle because people are fleeing dense populated, you know, very expensive places like Californian coming to New Mexico. And, you know, that's, that's definitely helping aspects of our housing market, et cetera, right now. Interesting to note, Wally, moving on to federal policies a little bit, 14 states are suing the Biden administration on their oil and gas permitting moratorium, but not New Mexico. I know. Isn't that shocking? Even though we are by far the number one state impacted. And yet, no interest in a lawsuit. Even the governor, you know, to her credit, has said a lot of things about how we should not have this policy in place, that the Biden administration should not be doing what they're doing. When it comes to actually put up or shut up in New Mexico, our Attorney General Hector Balderas has remained very, very quiet.
Yes. That, I don't think that is surprising, but it is disappointing. And it's interesting how these Attorney Generals band together. And it, it is rare, although in this case with 14, I have a feeling, do you have the count in? Were there any Democrats that were in there? I mean, I know a lot of the states impacted. There were not? Yeah. And that, that seems to be the common thread, you know, when attorneys general would sue the Trump administration, it was usually predominantly, if not exclusively, Democrat. And now in this case, who's going to be suing it? But boy, I, I don't want to trivialize this issue as being, what's the word? Well, I guess, a small potatoes. This is not some political fight. This is, this is really important to New Mexico's economy and New Mexico's future as a state and as a, as a going concern from a fiscal point of view.
No doubt about it. And 14 states suing Biden administration, but New Mexico is not just not among them, but we are by far the most impacted. According to the American Petroleum Institute, we will lose an estimated 62,000 jobs, $1.1 billion in state revenue. Those are some staggering numbers. Wyoming is the next most impacted state by the Biden administration policies. They would lose about half the jobs, 33,000 and a little more than half of the state revenue at 641 million dollars. But it is really all about New Mexico and Wyoming in terms of states that lose resources, states that lose money, states that lose under this particular policy. And you do have some Gulf states that are going to lose out. Texas, for example, lose Louisiana, Mississippi, Alabama. It's interesting that it's not so much the onland.
Yeah, it's the offshore in those states.
Where those Gulf states could lose. And, you know, those Gulf states do tend to be more Republican dominated. So it's not entirely surprising that they would be up in arms. But it is, it is staggering that New Mexico will be so impacted by this. And yet, our Attorney General hasn't said anything about what could or should be done in terms of addressing the Biden administration. So that's, you know, frustrating. But again, elections have consequences. And New Mexico did not get to its current state without electing a lot of left-wing politicians who don't stand up for the industry that stands up for them. Now, one thing that I wanted to address before we, we sign off is a little note in the Albuquerque Journal, and I'll just read it. You know, they have that speak-up section.
Yes.
And it's pretty much where people get to rant and rave sometimes.
Usually about the Lobos, but there's other topics.
Well, that's when you're doing the sports speak-up. There's a normal speak-up too. And you have both, both sides get to air their grievances. Sometimes they're more, you know, reasonable in their rants. And sometimes they're kind of out, out left field. This one is a teacher, apparently, and I'm quoting, "I'm tired of people bashing on teachers. If you want to continue to complain about us, how about all of you teacher haters homeschool your kids? If you complain about teachers, then you have no business sending your kids to us. Teach them yourselves since you're so self-righteous." Well, not, when I read that, I think, well, not only did I, we homeschool our kids this year, but it's not really about whether you like your kids or not, and whether you've done a good job parenting your kids. Because I had no problem homeschooling my kids from a personality perspective. We get along fine. Sometimes they fight a little bit, but that's, that's, that's just kids. What we really have in terms of policy concerns is that, and I did the calculation again for FY19 and FY20. So this is the last APS budget. Again, I'm using APS. I could go through all the other districts and you could get a lower calculation because APS is probably the most bloated, most mismanaged public school system in the state. The annual budget, according to their own documents, and this is posted right at erasofenchantment.com, APS's budget, 1.475, 755646. So that is 1.475 billion dollars annually.
1,400 million.
Yes. Divide that by 79,363 students in APS. And again, I know we're getting math-heavy here.
Yes.
Love those fractions, but.
Fractions and ratios.
18,595 per student. APS, 18,595. Now, I would gladly, for each of my kids, I don't even need all that money back.
You know what? But, and another way to look at it is like, how many kids would it take that it would be good to be a teacher at 18,000 a pop?
Yeah.
It's like, you know, five, six kids? I think that, I think that would be a relatively attractive salary and you could probably do a fantastic job with that.
Absolutely. You know, you might get into the whole teaching biz if you could, if you could get in for a few, few students at 18,595 a pop. And, and that's my point here, is that, A, yes, it is not appropriate to diss or downgrade teachers and say, you know, they all stink or something. Because first and foremost, my kids have been in APS school. I know that they have a lot of really great teachers. My problem is the system, and especially the way the system is funded, which is ultimately by force. And the fact that my kids didn't go to APS at all this year because of, I think, their mismanagement of the COVID pandemic. I had two kids that would have been in APS. So you're talking getting up towards 19 grand per kid. That kind of money could really do a lot for parents and families of all income levels. Now, we can handle this because thankfully, we're at the income scale where we can do flexible and creative things to make this work for our kids. But there's a lot of people who simply could not. And this is some money that could be freed up to help those young people, whether it's attend the Catholic school or a private school or some other educational opportunity that works for them. And it's just a, it's just the essence of school choice. So, you know, while it's easy to bash on this individual teacher, teachers as a whole, it's ultimately the system. Now, I don't care much for this attitude. I don't think people by and large are bashing teachers and hating on teachers per se. I think they're frustrated by the union dominance and the educational system in place. And I do think it's very important, as we have these conversations, to focus your ire on the system, not on teachers who usually are trying to do the right thing.
Yeah, absolutely. And you know, I was just thinking, Paul, I don't know of anyone who I went to school with that would disagree that we had some really good teachers and we had some really bad teachers. But your point is, the one we're saying is that if we look at the effectiveness of the system, how things are doing compared to other states similarly situated to New Mexico, we're not doing as well. Our kids don't have as much academic achievement and it hurts them as a result. And so, yes, the other issue is, you know, there's two things. It's like, if you, you know, if you don't love it or leave it, that is one approach to public policy. But the other is, is that you care enough about the mission of something to say, yeah, let's look to improve it. And I do think that, you know, that's been my focus. When I, I look at education issues is, yeah, it's not about, it's not about berating any teacher. It's like, hey, let's make the system work better because there are places that it does. And it's amazing how much better those students do over their lives because it does work better.
You got it. Well, we will go ahead and leave it right there this week. Oh, good. Potential spam. My favorite, my most ardent admirer on the cell phone.
Yes, me too.
Thanks for listening to this week's episode. Find all episodes at tippingpointnm.com or at the Rio Grande Foundation's YouTube channel. Subscribe to this show at Apple, Stitcher, or have your Google Home play Tipping Point New Mexico. Thanks to Path3 Marketing for producing this show.